Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, meeting of the Middletown City Council Order. Please stand and join me in a moment meditation and impulsion of the flag. As a reflect this evening, I'd like to call special attention to the victims from the Las Vegas tragedy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Johnston, here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here.
I've received several comment cards this evening. We'll start this evening with Ms. Karen Moore. Ms. Moore. Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Karen Moore, 918 Sixth Avenue, Middletown, Ohio.
Thank you.
Basically, I have another question. My understanding is that the city of Middletown has a proposal to purchase a problem bar called Bar Boca on Charles Street for the sole purpose of demolishing it. The city, I understand, is taking $35,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund. However, this is an inflated price from the original price of $25,000. And so my question is, what is this procedure that we need to go about to object to the proposal for purchases at this price?
Well, we're really not set up, Ms. Moore, for a question and answer format, but we'll give the city manager follow-up with you on the procedure that we took to go through that. There was a series of legislative readings on that, and so we moved forward with that based upon some input we received from the police department and from others. So.
All right.
Thank you. All right. The next card I have this evening is from Vincent, Mr. Vincent Harris. Mr. Harris? Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Good, thank you. If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Vincent Harris. The address is 1460 Young Street. My question, or what I want to bring up, on September 19th, at the city council meeting group of citizens, we're told that there was no plan or concerns, oh, I'm sorry. What I'm wanting to talk about is the consent agenda approval. On September 19th, the city council meeting group met with a group of citizens and were told there was no plan, and there was that the concerns were premature. But in a later date, on September 15th, Mr. Gregory Dale of McBride Dale Corden indicated his firm's willingness to continue working with the city on the development of an updated master plan of the scope of work specialized by the firm, including minimum input about the citizens indicating that focus group are optionals. So my question is to the city manager and the mayor, denial of existing of a plan concerning housing untrue? Is there a plan for equitable community input? If so, what is it and/or when will that development take place?
Sure. Well, again, we're not set up really for question and answers, and I can have the city manager follow-up with you specifically on this, but the housing study that we talked about on the 19th was separate from the overall master plan, and there's a whole master planning process, and that's what's going to be kicked off as part of the, we've got a motion item to do to, excuse me, a consent item this evening to award a contract to kind of begin that master planning process. And that's, we're early stage for that as well, too, and there'll be a variety of things. I'm sure the manager can report on that as well.
I guess I just want to know if you're bringing up the $75,000 before the city council?
Yes, that is on our consent agenda this evening to begin that.
So will you be voting to give that money or not?
Well, it's to award it for the initial work on that, so I'm sure the city manager can address that in his comments this evening.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next card I have this evening is from Mr. Abdul Shakur Ahmed. Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Abdul Shakur Ahmed, 1413 South Main Street, Middletown. I want to share the increased peace, a moral and spiritual vision for our community. Then the men set out from there, and they looked towards Solomon, and Abraham went with them to set them on their way. The Lord said, "Shall I hide from Abraham what I am about to do, seeing that Abraham shall become a great and mighty nation, and all the nations of the earth shall bless themselves through him? No, for I have chosen him, that he may charge his children and his household after him to keep the way of the Lord by doing righteousness and justice, so that the Lord may bring to Abraham what he has promised." Then the Lord said, "Because the outcry against Solomon and Gomorrah is great, and their sin is very grave, I will go down to see whether they have done altogether according to the outcry which has come to me, and if not, I will know." So the men turned from there and went towards Solomon, but Abraham still stood before the Lord. Then Abraham drew near and said, "Wilt thou indeed destroy the righteous with the wicked?" Genesis 18, chapters 16 through 23. The nature of a moral vision for our community is based on righteousness and justice, two action verbs which require broad-based involvement of the faith community in particular and the concerned citizen in general. Increase the peace, a moral and spiritual vision for our community embodies a positive progression of an action plan for the faith community and incorporates a critical scriptural reality, peace, as a common goal toward which we all can work. The strength of the faith community is the moral and spiritual vision which needs to be imparted to our hurting and fearful community. I believe the current manifestation of evil in our community is more of a moral and spiritual problem than any other. The faith community is uniquely equipped to provide theological interpretation and reflection which address the problem. It is incumbent on the faith community to actively provide a moral and spiritual vision for our city, which will raise to a heightened sense of awareness the value placed on each human life, the shame of murder, the obligation to care for our neighbors and our city. Increase the peace will be the rallying call to the action plan developed by the faith community to impart for the manifestation of righteousness and justice in the city of Middletown, Butler County, Ohio, USA. May it be God's will. Peace be with us all.
Thank you. The next card I have this evening is from Ms. Sharona Sinclair. Ms. Sinclair? Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
It's Sharona Sinclair.
Oh, Sharona, sorry. Okay.
And I reside at 1628 Bannon Court, Middletown, Ohio.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a question, and I would like to know if there is a committee that is supposed to designate the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and if so, I'd like to know when they meet, and if not, I'd like to know why. Based on the HUD regulations, aren't we supposed to have one?
Sure. I know the city manager can probably follow up in detail on that. We do have a planning process that looks at the annual plan as well as a five-year kind of plan for the community development block grants. There is a number of community input items that are available either through the library. I think the senior said there's one on our website in terms of information available for our community development block grant programs, and that's reviewed through public hearings here.
And do you know when they meet?
I do not have the specific dates for what's coming up.
Plan is submitted in March. There's a series of public hearings before that. I do not have the exact dates, but they're always on our webpage and available to the public. They're published in the Middletown Journal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down this evening. The next card I have this evening is from Mr. Daniel Cordill. Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Cordill. My address is 6970 Fielder's Way. I recently saw an ad in the Middletown Journal. It was put in by Premier Health, and they were opposing the zoning change that would not allow additional beds to be gone into the Kettering Hospital that's being built on 122. I understand that you will have the final say over how that zoning goes, and I'm wondering, why are they opposing the small number of beds that Kettering has asked for? Because I don't believe they provide coverage to all the same end-network groups. I think there's a choice to be made there. I think people in Middletown deserve the best care they can get, no matter who it's with, and I don't really think it'll impact Atrium that much. It's a fine facility with many, many fine divisions, new equipment, great staff, but they're still pushed to their limited times, and I think the addition of Kettering is a good thing for Middletown. It provides more, and the few beds they're asking for is not asking to build another hospital to compete with Atrium, but just a satellite. So I hope that the council will consider this as you move forward.
Thank you. All right. And the last card I have this evening is from Ms. Rhonda Arnold. Ms. Arnold? Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Rhonda Arnold. I live at 1107 Park Lane Apartment E., Middletown, Ohio, 4502. My question tonight that I would like some answers is about housing. How does a city plan to attract more buyers when they have this housing? I know you're working on it. I'm just trying to find out, how can I be on the committee or what can I do to get more involved?
Sure.
In this?
And again, we're really not set up for a whole lot of question and answers here, but you know, this is early stage for the housing study, and Mr. Atkins is gathering those questions and appreciates the input from the committee, so as we're getting that, we'll be rolling out some opportunities for a lot of public engagement and the discussion on the plan. So we'll make sure we keep folks up to date through the journal and through our website and through our other means.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down this evening. All right. That's all the citizen comment cards I had this evening. Mr. Atkins, we can move to your city manager reports?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm very pleased to have Finance Director Jake Burkin here today. We have been honored with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for, I believe, the second year in a row, correct? We are audited independently each year. This is the second year in a row that the state has conducted that audit for us. This is a very prestigious award. Not very many communities get it. Entities that receive the award meet the following criteria of a clean audit report. The entity must file timely reports with the Auditor of State's office in the form of a comprehensive annual financial report. The audit report must not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings or questioned costs, and the entity's letter from the state must contain no comments related to ethical issues, questioned costs of less than $10,000, lack of timely report submission, reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a single timely, timely single audit, findings for recovery of less than $100, and violation of any public meetings or public records related to the audit. Jake and his team has done a fantastic job of keeping our books clean. We have them online. You can get on opengov.com on our website and pull up anything you want to look at, and not only are we clean and public and transparent, but he's done a great job with us, getting us again the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. I want to bring that to your attention. Very nice work, Jake. Thank you very much.
Very well done.
Second, Your Honor, at the October 17th meeting, we've talked about this a little bit, and you're going to see more with the exact dollar amount in the public safety budget presentation here in just a few minutes. We have received a offer of a fire grant for all new self-contained breathing apparatus. Ours are all expiring at the end of this year or in 2018. The amount, and I will get you the exact amount, was $330,000 in grants that we will get. We have to accept that grant on a fairly short notice. I will be asking for emergency passage of the ability to accept that grant. You will see during the budget presentation that we will not actually get that money until 2018 as part of the 2018 budget. I wanted to let you know that that will be coming at the next meeting as an emergency measure so that we can get all of that equipment replaced under the grant. Third, in regard to Mr. Harris's question on the housing, again, McBride Dale Clearing, excuse me, will be on your consent agenda tonight. That is literally to hire the firm to start the process of looking at the master plan. They will have steering committees. They will have a lot of things they're doing. People keep asking about the housing, and I keep trying to explain. I'll keep saying it until people understand and people believe me. We haven't started anything. That's the whole point, is to get out in front of this and have these conversations in the community before we get going. We want you involved. We want the group involved. We're happy to do it. That's why we're doing what we're doing. That's why I was out at the community center. That's why we're out giving these presentations. I'll be at Chamber here in the next week or so, giving the exact same presentation that you've seen and the public has seen, it's the exact same process. The whole process is, purpose is to, again, move forward with something that works for the entire community with everybody's input. You will see when the rest of the budget comes at the October 17th meeting, there's not a dime in there for new neighborhood initiatives because we don't know what we're doing yet. We don't know what we're doing with housing. We don't have any of that laid out. So you will see that as part of the next budget. We will work with anybody that wants to work with us. We're happy to do it, and there'll be lots of opportunity for as much input, and frankly, there's no timeframe on this. I'm trying to set housing policy up for the next 10 to 20 years. There's no time to get it right, and we take as long as it takes until we get it right and we have something that works for the community. So I keep trying to say that, and I'll keep saying it until people believe me, but that's where we're at in the process. Number four on my list is the Kettering Health Network will be coming for your attention at the October 17th meeting. Given the time that was spent on planning commission, I expect a robust meeting on October 17th. It may take us some time to get through it. My suggestion to council was that I put it at the end of the agenda so that anybody else that's here for business, we can quickly get that done, have presentations, let everybody else get their stuff done, and then we'll move on to the public hearing and the debate over the Kettering Health Network proposal. My other suggestion would be, do we want to schedule a break at maybe 6:30 or something and have a half hour where council can stop and have a bite of pizza or something and eat their dinner and take a break in the middle, and then we'll get back into it and stay as long as we need to to get it done right, but that would give you all the chance to get the early business done, have a quick bite to eat, and then sit down and stay as long as we need to to get it done. Is that an okay way to move forward with the next meeting?
I just want to make you aware that the public hearing was advertised for 5:30. We can have it afterwards, but of course, that, the public hearing had to be advertised several weeks ago to even get it on the agenda. So it's, it's fine as long as we have it after. I just wanted to make you aware that it was advertised for 5:30 to get it as part of that meeting, so.
My suggestion is that we do it after. At least right now, when I looked at it today, there's not a lot on the agenda for the 17th. My recommendation would be that we get the business done and let everybody else move forward with whatever.
Move forward the agenda and then do the public hearing, so it sounds like a good recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, I will follow up. Let me grab the information tomorrow on the Bar Boca, and I will get the card from the mayor and track that down, and I apologize, I didn't get the lady's name on the community development block grants, but I will also get that card and track down the timing of both where on our webpage you can find that and where the timing is for public input into that process. The next thing I think I have, budget, correct, moving on, we do have the public safety budget presentation tonight. We will see this tonight, we'll see, go ahead, please, the remaining budget will be on October 17th. That will give you November 1st reading and 2nd reading in the two Novembers, so we'll take advantage, take effect, rather, by the end of the year and be ready to go. Wanted to remind you when we, I think it was back in June, we looked and asked about what your priorities were for 2018. One of them, obviously, was additional public safety. We've done what we could within the budget dollars that are available, and we'll show you how that's going to work. Go ahead, please. This is the public safety summary. You will see that we are up 5.8% overall. However, you'll see also in 2018, we are getting more because we have a full year of the Safer Grant. There's about 70-some thousand more that we'll be getting from Safer in 2018 to help cover the additional firemen that were hired under the Safer Grant. The grant that I talked to you about earlier that will be on the 17th for acceptance is $337,690, although we will accept that now. We will not get that money until, like, 2018, and we will then be spending it on the self-contained breathing apparatus. So when you take that out, it takes us down to about 3.2% increase. There was a 2% in all the collective bargaining and all of the wages will go up by 2% this year for cost of living, so we are up about 1.2% over the cost of living rates. Go ahead, please. Division of Fire, again, you see the difference up 3.9% with, again, the increased amount of the Safer Grant and then the AFT Grant reimbursement for the self-contained breathing apparatus. Fire training and prevention, go ahead with the left screen, please. Couple changes, and I'll show you in the next slide. You'll see that fire training prevention went up by three. Fire operations went down by three. There's a purpose for that, and if you would, go ahead, please. Reminding you that we have added 12 firemen since 2016 to get us up to 72 budgeted staff in 2018. This year, we've conducted a fire strategic planning study. It's given us a lot of information to look at as far as staffing and fire station location recommendations. Again, many of our stations are over 50 years old. They're centered more towards the west end of town. As we start developing the east end, the idea is how do we, over in the future, lay out those stations, refurbish the ones that need it to best lay out the community. We will be looking at that in 2018. We'll continue to work on the heroin epidemic. As police announce also that through September, we went down again on both overdoses and deaths. We had one death right at the end of the month. We had, and I apologize, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was down again from August on the overdoses. We continue to make progress. We are now five or six months in a row where it's gone down every month. Our hope is that maybe we're seeing the end of the peak anyway and trending down. One of the things that we're also working on, and the reason you saw three staff go from operations to fire prevention, we have been working with Troy and Information Systems on the Address Management System software. One of the things that when we did the chronic nuisance ordinance last year, we had some trouble getting it, all of the effectiveness out of that because we simply did not have the staff to monitor all the things that are going on. I told, I asked Troy if we could automate a lot of that so that it gathered a lot of the information for us, and the answer is yes. I can tell you, on the fire side, one of the things we're going to use this for is, I can tell you, one of the Butler Metropolitan, we've got a couple of towers of Butler Metropolitan Housing. One has almost no calls for service. One has hundreds of calls for service. This pointed that out, and you start to ask the question, why? What's different between the two? We now are looking at this. It tells us how many times we've been there to every address in the last six months, and so it gives us a chance to ask, start asking questions. I had a couple that I've asked the chief. We've been out there 12 times in the last three months. What's going on at this address? And what happens when you've got three fire platoons is, the first platoon goes out, the second platoon goes out, the third platoon goes out, and they don't really, because it was all different people, don't put it all together that we've been out that many times at one address. This starts to give us that idea of where we've been out multiple times and start asking the question, why are we going out there 12 times? And can we reduce that in some way? And so we're going to start really working in 2018 on our call volume, not only for things like chronic nuisance for drug overdoses and things that need to be done with landlords and things like that, but also for a chronic diabetic that is being left alone that can't regulate his sugar. The best answer for that person is probably not 12 times every six months to take him out to the ER. That's a run for us. It's an ER visit for them. The answer's for the guy to be able to regulate his sugar correctly. That's the answer. And so, you know, what adult services are out there that would allow us to do that? Can we use the clinic on Verity? What, there has to be a better answer than us going out there 12 times. Well, first thing you gotta know is you're going out there 12 times, and so this is starting to give us that capacity. It's giving us a lot of access to data that we can start asking the right questions and start moving forward. So fires got a lot going on with staffing. They've got a lot going on with looking at fire stations. You know, I've told them, I said, in my mind, ideally, what we would do is, we would start laying out where ideally our fire stations should be. If we can figure out where that is and what the staffing would look like, then the next question is, where would that land be? How would we get it? If we can get the land, we can start designing stations. We start designing stations. You get down to 2020, 2021, 2022. As the revenues allow us, we start looking at building stations where they need to be ideally to best serve the community. And so this is kind of that first, 2017 was the first part of that. 2018's going to begin building on that to start reducing our call volume, to look at where we will put our fire stations in the future. They're doing a lot of really good work, and I'm very proud of the fire department and what they're doing. So, go ahead, please. Division of Police is up 4.1%. Again, you're going to see changes down, Criminal Investigation down, Narcotics is a brand-new division, and again, a sign of the times. Go ahead, please. You'll see here, what has happened is we, one of the things you said was adding police officers. We are going to try to add one. That's what we have the ability to pay for this year. We're going to add another patrol officer to the Uniform Patrol. The change has been, we've pulled seven detectives out of Criminal Investigation. Narcotics and everything used to all be just called Criminal Investigation. We've now pulled seven of those people out, and they're strictly narcotics. They are working, one's working with the burn unit, one's working with the Dayton DEA. We've got several in our own local narcotics division here, but the idea, as long as the heroin problem is going on, we're going to put our money where the crimes are. Drug arrests are up. Last time I looked, 30%, 40%. Don't quote me on the number, but substantially over last year, and again, that's a result of the changes. We adapt, they adapt, we adapt again, and we keep trying to move forward to get the ODs down, and this is the 2018 look of how that's going to be. So go ahead, please. Again, one additional patrol officer in 2018. We'll continue to work on the heroin crisis, staff to the Narcotics Division, and again, the Address Management System. We're doing exactly the same thing in Police and Fire that we did with the chronic nuisance, and the idea is, we've already seen one of the areas, we've got a large retail place, that we had been out 248 times in six months. What we found out when we sat down and talked to them is, all they care about is for loss prevention, they need to have a police report that says Tommy took a TV and it was valued at $300. They can file that online. They don't need a police officer to come out and do that. We gave them the link. They said, oh, fine. And again, we said, if you ever have an active situation, you have a safety issue, call us. We'll come. But if you could turn that 248 calls into 48 calls over six months, again, you're freeing patrol up to go out and run more proactive things. This is the type of thing we'll be doing. We'll be looking at the Chronic Nuisance Ordinance. We'll be looking at places we're going over and over and over and asking the question, why are we going there? Is it a landlord tenant issue? Is it a landlord-tenant issue? Is it a retail that's not doing anything with their security? You know, what can we do to help a business that's having a lot of loss, you know, smaller business that needs help resetting up? Do they need cameras? Do they need better layout of their store so that it's harder to steal from them? Those are the things that, again, this Address Management System allows us to ask the right questions. And we'll be working on that in 2018. Go ahead, please. That's the public safety budget. You've got the detail in your big, thick books I've given you. We are available for questions at any time. You can email them to us, give them today at any time. We're happy to answer them. We will have some changes coming at the next one. We're looking at a brand-new payroll system in 2018. We'll roll that out and show you what we're doing. The idea is to start making us more sustainable as we hire new people in 2018 moving forward. We're going to spread out the steps and do some interesting things. And we're looking forward to showing that to you. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for council from Mr. Atkins? All right. Very good. With that, we can move on to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
Through consideration this evening, we have the approval of the City Council minutes from September 19, 2017, to receive and file Boarding Commission minutes from the Library Board, June 20 and July 18, 2017, the Board of Health from August 8, 2017, and the Civil Service Commission of August 24, 2017, to confirm the personnel appointment of Rebecca Zakara to the Position of Human Resources Specialist in the Department of Law, Division of Human Resources, to receive and file Oath of Office for David Baumgartner and Shelby Quinn Levin, to receive and file a maintenance bond and a performance bond submitted by Fisher Development Company Incorporated guaranteeing public improvements constructed as part of Renaissance II, Section 5 subdivision, and to authorize an agreement with McBride Dale Clarion to perform the work for the city master plan update on an hourly rate basis not to exceed $75,000.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So approved.
And a second? Okay. Ms. Gank, which call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right. We have one motion out of this evening?
To award a contract with Municipal and Contractor Ceiling Products, Cincinnati, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the rehabilitation and relining of manholes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The city has approximately 116 manholes across the city that need to be restored and relined. They are all about 50 years old and are brick. Bids were taken. Municipal and Contractor Ceiling Products was the lowest and best bid. They are a new vendor for the city, but they have checked out with their references. They have done large contracts with the city of Dayton and Columbus for over 10 years, and staff is recommending approval of that contract.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Atkins?
When's the last time we had work done on manholes? Or?
Not in the, I will ask for a long time.
Long time.
Okay. With that, I want to entertain a motion to award a contract with Municipal and Contractor Ceiling Products of Cincinnati, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the rehabilitation and relining of manholes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Gank, which call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to our council comments this evening. Start with Mr. Picard.
Thanks, Mayor. No comments.
All right. Mr. Bohannon?
Oh, thank you.
All right. Mr. Moon?
I'll be brief because I'm fighting a cold. I just wanted to, although I didn't get to attend, I want to congratulate the SORG on their grand reopening with the Butler Philharmonic. I heard it was a very special night. So congratulations to them and all the work they've done over the many years it's taken to get here. That's all.
Ms. Bronston?
I want to congratulate Jacob, is he gone already? For the award that we received. I really appreciate the fact that we keep all of our financials very transparent. They are on our website, like Mr. Atkins said. First Friday is coming up, this Friday. We have a noon concert with a ventriloquist this time at First Methodist Church across from the library. Then, of course, the Pendleton is that night. So I plan on hitting both of those activities.